I'd like to call the meeting of the Fargo Public Schools Board to order. I'd like approval of the agenda, please.
I move we approve the agenda as prepared.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Just to let you know, I got a message from Robyn and she's stuck at a train, so she should be here momentarily. But I thought we'd get started since we have guests, so. Correspondence, anyone? Jim?
Well, it's really not correspondence, but it's a little homework and I don't want us scrambling at the end for it. GAC is meeting next week and one of our topics is to really talk about how board members will be engaging with area legislators. I have a list here of all of our local legislators. And if you would be so kind as to, if you know any of these people, or even if you don't, pick two or three and put your name next to them. Then when we come up with contact strategies, you'll be the person we'll kind of look to connect with those particular board members or legislators. So I'll pass that around.
Thank you. Now we have our special guests, the strategic plan in action, celebrating success. Rachel?
Thank you. The presentation tonight is regarding result seven, which is the arts. And our statement reads that as a result of our efforts, students will experience visual and performing arts through appreciation, creation, and performances. And tonight we have with us third graders from Claribarton. We have Mrs. Lingle, their principal, and our district arts specialist Sharon Eide. And Sharon will begin by sharing some of the alignments that she has done with Denise Odegaard, who is our visual performing arts specialist as well. So Sharon.
Has some information. One side is music and the other side is art. So if you want to take some time to just look at that and then we can have questions when we're finished. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tanya Lingle, Principal of Claribarton-Hawthorne. Happy to be here today with our kids and thank you for inviting us for dinner. Everybody loved it. Drumsticks were great, so thank you. We have some students that prepared a song along with their teacher, Mrs. Meester. And so at this time, we just have a short clip to show you on the. This is called "With These Hands." Right. Thank you. All right, we have brought some students along with us. I would like to introduce. We have Javier Hollingwolf. Zachary Thomason. Ella Taggart. And Helen Burt. And all of these kids represent a student from each classroom that we have in third grade at Claribarton campus. They are going to be the presenters of something that we have brought for you, actually as a gift from our fourth grade students. And so Sharon will tell you a little bit more about that.
When Tanya and I decided that we would take this on tonight, one of the things that I thought about was what is a way that our students could show you what they, how they experienced it. So we did a little brainstorming and what we decided to do was fourth graders, if they would like to take part in special projects. And I don't know how typical our fourth graders are or our students are, but when we, generally when we ask that, we have every single one of them that wants to be part of it. And so all 65 fourth graders said, yep, I'm gonna do it. So we ended up having to draw names. And so this is not the, you know, a certain handpicked group of students. This is the kids we drew out of the, out of the hat. And we met four, five Monday afternoons for a couple of hours. They gave me their noon hours. And then when it got down to crunch time and we were worried we weren't going to finish these, they came together and some, some of them worked together on pieces. So some of you will get two kids that have worked on your piece. And so I'd like you to open them so you can see what they've created for you. Just rip that top piece off. It'll be fine. You can't hurt what's underneath, so.
Oh my God.
And so, one of the things I'd like to explain to you is because they were so disappointed that they couldn't give these to you, I said, we'll take your picture with the picture. So that's their picture on the back, holding their work.
Everybody hold, hold up your portraits so we can see each others.
What I'd like you to, as you're looking at it, I'd like you to think about. Grade four students are just developing the ability to see. Up until grade four, they draw or, or do what they know. Grade four, you can start to reason with them. Are you sure the eyes go there? How big are the ears? Do they have a neck? You know, those kind of things. Okay? And this kind of shows you that in regard to the portrait, that from that standpoint, it's a record of their visual perception. So thank you for letting us share this with you. They had a blast with it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have questions, I'd be glad to take those regarding the results or any of the information that I had on me.
Before I let any of the other board members ask you any questions.
Yes.
On behalf of everyone, thank you so much. I don't get very many gifts and this is one of the nicest gifts I've ever gotten. So thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you.
And I know speaking for myself, we'd like to be able to write little notes to the individual students, so if you could provide.
And I did put, I think I did put their name in the corner with their.
Okay, good. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So now, board members do, oh, and thank you especially to our deliverers of the special gifts. We really appreciate that and we enjoyed your company at dinner tonight as well. So anyone for questions? Yeah. Or certainly in addition to. I think what we, we should try and, when we take a break, if some admin person could go upstairs and get a camera, we'll, we'll all stand together while we all have them here and get a photo of us with our, our portraits, so.
You love Lydia on the back.
Wait, whoops, we have to go on. Thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome.
Oh, Chris, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that my daughter's name got chosen randomly. And she chose to work on my picture and I, I didn't know what was going on with this art diversity. And so she said, you gotta come and see what I'm doing, because the parents come down when they pick them up and check it out. And Sharon, Mrs. Eide, said, no, you can't come in, you can't come in. I know it was gonna be a surprise, but I will pass this picture around because I, I don't know if you can see what a gigantic ham.
She said, can I do anything I want with a picture?
Of course she did.
And I said, of course you can.
Well, at least she kept her clothes on. That's a good point. I don't know. I just wanna, I just want to thank you because I know every single one of those kids that did art diversity was so thrilled to do it. And so thank you for that gift.
Thank you.
Anybody else with questions before we let our guests go? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us.
Well, I'm afraid anything after this is gonna be downhill, so, for a very long time, but. We have no audience members who signed up unless there's somebody there who didn't know our protocol and wanted to address the doesn't look like it. Staff reports, as I said, David, that's a hard act to follow, but do you have something for us tonight?
Yeah, nothing like that for you, but we just, we finished, we did, last Thursday night, we did Salvation Army bell ringing. We filled about 54 different spots, times with different staff members. So that was great. For those people that'd be outside, it was about like 20 some below wind chill, so good dedication there. We also just bought in about half of our schools so far for Gene Week last week for Christmas Wish and we have a little over $2,000 already. So I think we'll have another nice, we meet with them on Thursday at, or Friday at 3:30 to hand over the money and see what they do, what they want with it at the radio station. So it's been a good, another good fundraiser for us, so.
Well, thank you. Any other staff reports? Brock?
Madam President, members of the board, just a brief update on the progress that we are having elementary school at the Ed Clapp Park site. We continue to have meetings with the park district and the, we had a meeting last week in which we haled a number of legal documents that will need to be drafted amongst all the attorneys for each group, several joint powers agreements, and some have to happen with parking, with Bethel, easements for sidewalks and streets that'll be put in, things of that nature. So that progress continues. I shared with Dr. Schatz today the full of those documents and timeframes that we'll be proceeding on. The design team continues to work. Kevin Bartram from, our architect, is meetings with departments that are represented on the design team to make sure adequately programming the space and getting, and then Rose and Rachel and I and Jim Free and Bill Westrick and the architect, Kevin Bartram, will be meeting on a weekly basis as a smaller group to really start to fine tune that and put some decisions to that design. So that is the progress and it continues forward and we'll have questions if there are any.
Anyone? Thank you, Brock. Rachel? Okay, well, that's it for staff reports then. Consent agenda. Jim?
I'll move adoption of the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Now we're out to our business. Superintendent formative assessment. Well, as you all know, we review our superintendent twice a year. And thank you to everyone who submitted. It's very important that we all participate in these evaluations. Pleased to say that we have nine satisfactory opinions and a job well done. Robyn?
I move that this evaluation be accepted and filed.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? A unanimous support for our superintendent at this time. Do you wish to respond in any manner?
Well, I would just say that after 18 months of being on the job, it's been my pleasure to serve as your superintendent and I certainly appreciate the support that I've received from all of you over the last year and a half, so thank you.
Thank you. And we look forward to the next year. Tabled motion regarding the HVAC. Mr. Steen?
Other than to bring the motion off the table and I would assume it's open for discussion at this time.
So just to refresh our memory, the tabled motion was to authorize the administration to proceed with the design of the HVAC installation and replacement of the boilers at the six identified elementary buildings and prepare for bid letting in February of 2014. Jim?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion. I guess I'll do that and get it on the table before I'll even sure why. I'd like to amend, so it would read authorize administration to engage ONE for the design work and construction administration, including the commissioning of the systems at a combined fee of 9.25% and proceed with the design of the HVAC installation and replacement of the boilers at the six identified elementary buildings and prepare for bid letting in February of 2014.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? Jim?
First of all, I want to thank Brock. We've had a number of discussions at past board meetings, at a couple of planning meetings about fee structures in general, fee structures on this project in particular. And he did a lot of homework, looking at what design fees, construction administration fees are. This particular project has some nuances to it in the construction administration fee. I'll be real honest, I was actually earlier this week prepared to be amending to a much lower than 9.25% fee. But the commissioning of these systems, which is really the interfacing of all of the components that have been installed to make sure they're all properly operating, is a function that they have offered to do as part of their construction administration fee. Normally that would be something that we'd be getting bids for in, in the bidding process. I don't have a hard number on what that costs. Estimates that I've heard are anywhere from $35,000 to $75,000, depending upon the complexity of the systems and the number of rooms involved. I do know that Kindred, who went through a similar project of this nature at their building, had an emergency call to one of the mechanical contractors because the heating system wasn't functioning with the thermostat in the gymnasium one day prior to an event that was scheduled there. So this commissioning is a pretty important part of the integration of this project at the end. And since they are willing to do it and have identified that as a service they're gonna provide, I felt more comfortable with a fee of about 1.25% for the construction administration, including that. So that's kind of the background on how I wrote, arrived at that number.
Paul?
Well, Jim, I just want to clarify what you just said. Are you saying that the project, as it was originally scoped and prepared and bonded to, would include designing all of this equipment and material, installing all of the equipment and material, cleaning up the site, but not necessarily making sure it all worked together?
Jim?
No, we would be actually having probably the people that were in charge of the control mechanisms bid to do the commissioning work. But they, ONE has offered to do that as part of their construction administration fee. So when this gets let for bid, we won't be bidding that portion of the work any longer. So that's ultimately gonna bring us back a savings in cost. We would've had it done because we would've been putting it out as part of the spec of the bid.
Okay, well, I'll just respond to that. I'm okay with, with whatever we have to pay here. It sounds like we've reached a bit of a compromise. But it is amazing to me that we could design a complicated HVAC system that would be installed but wouldn't necessarily work until we called somebody else in to fix it. That's just amazing to me. But I'm still willing to vote in favor of it because we, I'd like to get the job done. But, you know, as it stands, and then the thought of spending, were you saying somewhere between $35,000 and $75,000 per school?
No, for all six schools. That's a cost estimate.
And, and so at 9.25, what will be the, what will be ONE's revenue stream on this? 9.25 times 11 million?
Members of the board, Paul, 9.25 times whatever the sum total of the bids are once they are awarded. So the proposal you see in front of you has an estimate, including the boilers. I mean, less than that, it would be 9.5 of whatever that total number is. I, whatever that total is. But it's 9.25% of the total project.
Of the estimated construction part of it. Not the, we don't add on the CA fees on.
Oh yeah, correct.
So we're, we're approximately, just for clarification sake, an estimate of 10.333,000. $10,333,000, 9.25 on that, you know, $960,000 or so, something in that neighborhood.
Members of the board, Paul, as the, the way the motion reads, you would be at the 12.258. 12,258,000, which includes the high efficiency boilers. 5% of that number.
9.25 of, of 12 and change. We're looking at about.
I think it's 11,200.
11,200, sorry, 11,258, the bottom table there that spells out the piece with the high efficiency boilers.
You know, the math looks like about $1 million ONE will be collecting for its fees on this.
Rusty?
I know you never know until it's bid out, but it's my understanding the estimates are pretty generous. Like I said, there's no guarantee how they'll come back. And then wondering if we're thinking this is the highest, and you and I have had some conversations, is there anything that we see out there that we're missing in this project?
Members of the board, Rusty, to the best of my knowledge, no, there was. A, a plan review meeting, which, any unforeseen things that are out there, items within the building? How are we feeling about the current plans? Does it have any effect? Other items that might arise within the building?
Jim, would you care to reread the amended motion, please?
Sure. Authorize administration to engage ONE for the design work and construction administration, including the commissioning of the systems at a combined fee of 9.25% and proceed with the design of the HVAC installation and the replacement of the boilers at the six identified elementary buildings and prepare for bid letting in February of 2014.
Okay, I think we better have a head count, please.
Madam President.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
A question, is this an amendment or an amended motion?
It's an amendment.
It's an amended mo, yeah.
Amended motion, not just the amendment?
What, we, we are voting on the wording that Jim just.
No.
To add the.
You're wording, we're voting on the amendment.
Right.
And then if that gets passed, we then discuss and vote on the amended motion. Right?
Okay. Anne Marie?
Myers? Nelson?
Yes.
Podchak?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Wallman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes. Now we are to our amended original motion. Is there any further discussion regarding this? John?
Madam President, members of the board, I, I know that from our planning meeting the other day, what, what is implied in, in this vote. But if, if Rick Steen or Brock could, the reason I wanted this sent back to committee was to very clearly clarify how we're intending to map out the funding. And, and it's implied in here, but if, if somebody could just spell that out a little bit publicly for us so that that's a matter of record, our intent to how we intend to fund this, once it's approved.
Rick?
Certainly, John. For the record, as, as John indicated, planning did have a meeting last, I think, believe in the 3rd of December and we talked about the different funding options. And in fact, I believe the next order of business is to address the funding of not only the HVAC, but also the intended new school. And we had our bond advisor basically run the numbers for us on the, on the building fund. And there's some legal ramifications and some limitations, what we can actually bond for within the, within our, within our building fund. And he was able to run the numbers to indicate that, as you'll see with the next order of business, that we can basically issue an additional, approximately $27 million of bonds and be in accordance with the regulations surrounding the building fund. So the next motion, or the next order of business, will be to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds up to 27 million. You know, that's the maximum we would be looking at under that bond resolution. There are other options available to us that need to be, I think, determined as we move forward with the, with the building and how much we have for state funding for, available for the, the next school building, that type of thing. So the other options include not only the building fund, but there are, there is, there are cash reserves included in the building fund that we could use, or also possibly cash reserves within the general fund we could use for the HVAC system. So we have some options. And right now, though, what we wanted to make sure was if, if everything else stayed the same, we'd have enough funding in the building, enough opportunity in, in the building fund to fund both the HVAC and the new school.
Madam President, Rick, if we could continue to, just for the sake of explaining, we're, we're applying to the state construction fund, loan fund. And if we, if you could explain that just a moment.
Sure, and Brock might have a better handle on that, but there is a, some funds that were allocated to a state, by the state for educational building purposes. I think there was 200 million, if I'm not mistaken, at a fairly low interest rate, I think up to 1. some percent. Something below 2% was the availability of funds there. And to a maximum of $15 million per district or per project, I'm not sure the exact piece there, but up to $15 million allocated to, we'll say, a district. And so we will be making application to the state. We've been told that currently most of those funds have been already requested. Not all of that has been allocated at this point, but they have enough requests at this point to, if the, if the projects meet all the requirements, that they would be probably, that, that fund would be emptied. And there's also possibility that there'd be more funds allocated to that state building fund as well. But we just don't know where that's at.
Want to add anything to that, Brock?
Madam President, members of the board, I would just add that we certainly will have an application and will be in the funds that either are or would be available at Avenue. And we will just.
Is there anyone with any other comments regarding the actual motion now? We'll address more detail of the financial piece when we get to the next item of business. Chris?
Thank you. Brock, do you have any sense with your, kind of the relationship that you've developed through this design process with ONE, whether or not they would be amenable to the adjustment in the proposal?
Members of the board, Chris, I would say with all projects, everything is negotiable. So it's a conversation that I will certainly have.
So it's a conversation that I will certainly have with representatives from O N E, are aware of the conversations that the board had at the last meeting, and understand. That's given them some time to consider what, if any, flexibility there is as well as us, and I'm confident that we'll find a way to find.
Anyone else? In that case, have the motion read, please.
Motion on the table is to authorize administration to engage O N E for the design work and construction administration, including the commissioning of systems at a combined fee of nine point two five percent, and proceed with the design of HVAC installation and the replacement of the boilers at the six identified elementary buildings, and prepare for bid letting in February two thousand and fourteen.
Probably should have a roll call again.
Nelson?
Yes.
Pachek?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Wallman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Goldenberg?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Look forward to hearing more about this as you proceed with the design and bid letting, et cetera. We are now at a resolution for bond issuance. Mr. Steen, you've already covered a lot of this, but if you have something else to add before.
I'm not going to reread the resolutions. They're substantial, and I don't really want to have you guys listen to me for that long. But I will make the motion that we approve the attached resolutions and direct the business manager to publish the initial resolution for limited tax school building fund bonds in the legal newspaper of the Fargo School District. The amount of the resolution, I believe, is twenty-seven million, some odd sense, I think, come out in front of me, twenty-seven million seven hundred and thirty thousand.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Jim?
John and Rick both kind of alluded to this, but for those that weren't at planning, we have available funds that could buy down the amount of debt we have to put out there. And depending upon the availability of low-interest money from the state, it might make sense for us to use our own funds that are generating less than one percent interest return and offset some of our debt costs. Just so you have a reference point, we, if we get the right thing from the state, which I'm not saying we're going to, we maybe would be in a position where we'd actually only go forward with about sixteen and a half million in bonds and use other resources for the difference. That's really the free board that we have in this process. But absent knowing what the school construction system's going to actually offer us, this resolution clearly allows us to move forward and make a final determination farther down the road.
Robin? So your motion was up to or a maximum of?
Up to the twenty-seven million.
Madam President, just a question of process. Things can change, I suppose. So by approving this application for bonds, doesn't assume that we'll get bids that are acceptable, or that we'll get the loans from the state, or that the, you know, that we'll have the strength of community support that we're expecting. So I'm leaving room there that I suppose, you know, this is paving the way for the opportunity to do this, but it's not like this board deciding this today and it's etched in stone forever. Is that, is that correct?
Well, certainly, to my understanding, this is our maximum ability. If between now and when we have to finalize the actual amount that we are asking for, various things can happen that could adjust it. But if at this time, we don't follow the right procedures to ask for what is our maximum ability legally, we can't ask for more later. We can always ask for less if something were to change. So I think we still have that flexibility, and we'll, when the time comes where we have to make a concrete decision, we'll be advised accordingly. Is that correct, Brock? Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President, I'm just going to throw in one more thought. The, I think we're all investing in a vision, when we've just gone through the facilities planning process, and we're also visualizing our financing going into the future. I believe we're all investing in what we believe is the best approach. And I'm really hanging my hat on the community support for this. I'm so appreciative of the community engagement process we went through, and how strong their messaging was about the issue of, especially the air conditioning, and especially addressing the growth in South Fargo. So I'm hanging my hat on that level of support. I don't think if we, I think if we didn't have that support, we wouldn't be here today. And I'm acknowledging that that's there, and counting on that relationship going forward in this next year.
Anne Marie, could we have a roll call on this too, please?
Pachek?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Wallman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. And Brock, I assume you'll keep us up to date on that as it moves ahead. Thank you. Monitoring of E L ten, communication and counsel to the board. Robin?
I move that we accept the monitoring report on E L ten and file it accordingly.
Second? Thank you. John? Any additional comments or discussion? There were no comments in the policy change category on this one, and pretty straightforward. So if there are no additional comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Governance had several policy changes referred to us, and we discussed them at the last meeting. The first is G P seven, committee structure changes. You may remember that there's been some discussion raised as to whether the negotiations committee should be an annual committee or a standing committee in light of the fact that at least currently, we are on two-year contracts with our staff and only negotiate in alternate years. So it was brought back to governance, and in the, not only did we discuss that element, but we looked at all of the wording related to the negotiations committee, which you have in front of you. First of all, we realized that in the past, it has said collaborative bargaining, and for several years, we did have collaborative bargaining. This last session was not. And so we felt that if we were cleaning up at this time, it was appropriate to not specify that in this E L in order to not limit the negotiation process. That doesn't mean that we won't strive for a collaborative bargaining if that is the wish of the parties at the next session. It's just that since our practice was not always that way, that it should be more general in the wording in this piece here. And there was also changes made on the second page to identify contract negotiation years. The general consensus of the governance committee was that there should be a negotiations committee in place at all times, because, I mean, hopefully, we'll never be in this situation, but there's always the possibility that something could come up in a given year that is related to the contract and not being followed correctly or something, and we would need to reopen negotiations, or something would need to take place. So if there are any additional questions, Rick?
I have a question.
Mike?
Thank you. A question on four B, and we've probably discussed this, but I'm looking at membership. And it says five members appointed annually in contract negotiation years by the president and approved by the board. So every other committee, we actually appoint annually. But this was annually in contract negotiation years only. So does that anticipate there's a carryover for one year?
Potentially. I mean, if there's an election in a given year and somebody who was part of the negotiation doesn't run again or is whatever, then there would have to be adjustments made. This was sort of a compromise, so it would be to the discretion of the president at the new president at each year as they make their appointments. But the idea was that in negotiation years, there would certainly be the appointment of a new committee. Yes.
It doesn't really seem like it gives that discretion. It seems like this committee will be appointed in contract negotiation years. And that's it, all it says. And so in the non-contract negotiation years, what happens?
It's still in place.
That same committee?
Right.
So that next president?
Would have the.
Well, it doesn't say that, though, Diana.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Jim?
I think I brought this up at governance. I think you just leave it like it was, five members appointed annually by the president and approved by the board. And if it's the same group on non-negotiating years that we just had, so be it. If it's a different group, so be it. Part of the issue is, we can span a calendar year with this committee. Negotiations, I always hope it's done before the end of the school year. Sometimes it doesn't get done until August or later, which goes over the start of our year. So I would recommend we just on B, go right back to the language we had before, five members appointed annually by the president and approved by the board. I don't think it's hurt us in the past to have that done, and I don't think it would hurt us in the future.
Chris?
Well, as the negotiations chair, I feel a little strange, because I don't care one way or the other, but I'm a little confused when you say there will be a negotiating committee at all times, but it's not a standing committee. Can someone explain what the point of that is?
Well, we didn't change the status of it as a standing committee. You know, it's somewhat of a semantic sort of thing. Today, we have two-year contracts with our staff, but maybe next time, it'll be three years or one year, or who knows, from negotiation to negotiation. And there was a lot of discussion at governance about whether we needed a committee in the alternate years, and the general consensus was that we need to have a group in place in the unlikely event or unfortunate event that something comes before the group.
And that being the case, why not have it be a standing committee? That's really all I'm asking.
Well, where does it say that we changed it from being a standing committee?
It's not the standing committee, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it's under standing board committees.
Then why isn't there, why isn't the chair part of the governance committee if it's a standing committee? Not that I want to do that, I'm just curious, and I'm a little backfinding mission.
Well, it never said, does it say that the standing committee chairs are members of the board?
Yes.
Okay. God serving this action. Yes, Paul?
Actually, I believe the chair of the negotiations committee is not required to be a school board member, one point. Would mean that it would be not following that the chair of that negotiations committee would also be on the governance committee. And the negotiations committee is such a single concept committee that it is semantics, and the function of it is not really parallel to all of the other standing committees, so we could call it whatever we want to. The fact is, it's going to get appointed at various times, and it's going to be always available because issues could pop up, so.
Well, and it does say that membership of the governance committee is the president, the vice president, and chairpersons, it says, planning, communications, and governmental affairs. So it doesn't say that membership is the chairs of the standing committees. It names them specifically. So at whatever time that this was proposed, before my time and probably before most, it was decided by the powers-to-be at the time that this was the makeup of the committee. So that satisfy your concern? Does anyone else have any issue with the change regarding collaborative bargaining? So I think I need a motion that would amend this to take out the piece that was highlighted and recommended by the governance committee. Jim?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. The other piece that governance addressed was E L three and four, and I had them in the same memo so that you could see the changes side by side. When we looked at these two policies, we realized that the wording regarding harassment and discrimination, bullying, et cetera, were not consistent between the two. One is treatment of parents, students, and public, the other is staff. And so the changes were made to make them parallel policies in the wording. So you'll see that on the left, or E L, if you're looking at them side by side, E L three, on number five, we changed the word from prohibit to protect. And on the right, on E L four, the F and G were reworded as one to parallel what was in the E L three. And we are removing number six because that's redundant with the three A. Any? Robin?
I move that we approve the policy changes to E L three and E L four as presented.
Thank you. Any further? John?
Madam President, members of the board, I'd request that the governance, no hurry, but at some point in time, revisit these two categories, these two suggested wordings or two examples of wordings, and explore and research, and maybe with legal government, legal counsel, explore the topic of gender identity. It's been suggested many times that we include gender identity or perceived gender identity in our protections and our wordings. And I'm not suggesting that's where we'll land, or how it would go, or the implications of that, but if maybe governance could at some point in time dig into that with advice from experts, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments regarding this? In that case, all those in favor of the changes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, all those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Thank you. We're at board reports, committee and liaison reports. Paul?
I actually had a couple of meetings, a couple of meetings with the foundation and the Dollars for Scholars, and I don't really have anything concrete to report there other than that the number of individual schools within the district are working to land a concert to support Dollars for Scholars, and so you'll probably be hearing some more information about that coming up. It's kind of a neat, neat deal that could happen. And the foundation continues to be a very positive worker for the school. lot of other granting types of programs that are going forward. So there it is.
Robin?
Yes, the communications committee met last month, and we reviewed a PowerPoint that we would encourage board members to use with their liaison PTA schools. We'll be making the final touches on that this coming Thursday at our meeting at 11:30 December 12. And then also looking at some very neutral website pieces that will be presented to the committee as well. And so we kind of have a big year. So those of you that have scheduled with your PTAs, thank you. And those that have contacted me that you can't make it, thank you. And I encourage the rest of you to schedule those as soon as possible. They're being fairly well received when I scheduled mine. Also, I'm going to a Christmas party tomorrow night at Davies for their PTA social, so those are my plans. Chris?
Finding end of a meeting on 12/4, we discussed most of the issues that were covered at
planning, but we did do the periodic budget comparisons, looking for any significant variances or any need for any budget adjustments. We did not identify any at that point in time. We reviewed all the financing options as discussed earlier. Jim prepared an analysis of the mill levy authority discussion, whether or not that passes or not, the excess mill levy. And we looked at some issues there and looking at what the recovery period might be if the mill levy authority, excess mill levy would not pass. And that was anywhere from 15 to 36 years of stable, local funding if the excess mill levy did not pass. Estimated lost revenues over that period of time were up to $51 million to the district in that same period of time. And so we did take a look at that. We also reviewed the joint powers agreement, which was reviewed or approved at the consent agenda at tonight's meeting with the city and the Park District. Next meeting is 1-3, January 3.
Restee?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Chair?
The ACT will be meeting on December 17, a week from today, at 7:30 in the morning. And where is my assignment sheet?
Oh, I've got it. I'm the only one. I'll do it.
Thank you for everybody who identified some people that you might be willing to work with and contact. We'll be working to develop... Yes, I want to echo Robin's message that she sent out. I just want to... Oh, I'm kind of... And that's it.
You might not have heard that. Okay, my turn. The only thing I've done of particular extra interest this past week is I was interviewed, like Dr. Schatz, by the FM Monthly Magazine for their January issue. They're doing a piece on the changing school district, and we're really interested in the long-range facility plan. So we'll see what that turns up in January. Governance, the next meeting is January 7 at 7:30 in the morning. I just reiterate some of the dates that we've already discussed, the winter retreat, January 31, and the change in board meeting dates for March, so that we will have a board meeting on Tuesday, March 18, and not on Tuesday, March 25. I also had to remind you about the PTAs, so now you've had three reminders. So if you haven't done it already, three strikes and you're out, perhaps. I don't know. I also wanted to find out, has everyone done their school engagement?
John and I have been trying to schedule Woodrow.
Okay.
And we're not, have not been successful at this date. We're going to try to schedule some dates for coming up. But of course, we've got holiday coming up, and so we'll see what we can do. I do have time this next week, John.
Okay. Well, let me know once you've done it, so that we, we were going to have a more broad board discussion about it once everybody's done. I think that's everything, other than I wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, stay warm if you can. And John?
Madam President, the birthday committee has a report. Dr. Bob Gross's birthday is December 18. So happy birthday, Bob, next week. And we're not going to be back before Dinah, our president's birthday, so she, on 1-114, Dinah will be celebrated.
No.
January 10?
No, 11.
11. One, oh, I meant, I mean, yeah.
Oh, 11. Oh, beg your pardon.
I almost questioned my birthday calendar.
Yeah, no, no, I thought you meant the date was the 14. Okay.
Happy birthday next year.
Yes, you've got it right. Thank you. So our next meeting is January 14. Wow, that seems like an awfully long time from now, but I guess...
We could have an extra one.
No, I think it's okay. Yeah, we'll probably have occasion to run into one another. Debriefing? Anything? Anyone? Okay, well, happy holidays. And meeting adjourned. Thank you.